Yes.
Three, four?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think we got it before the morning.
There's no reason to bring partisanship down to the floor.
Have to be smaller, right?
I know when I, yeah, when we.
Put my glasses back on.
Damn it.
Really?
Oh, really? Oh, yeah.
What kind of life if you party and run instead of.
Oh, yeah.
Training. And I will, I, I may as well declare party, I never will.
Okay, one minute. Don't know.
One minute.
Last year then.
Twenty-one.
I don't want to.
She does.
Yeah.
One kind of, I always claimed, but I always thought it was a kind of a. It's capital. Like, I don't want to.
That's how I feel. I feel like I don't want to associate. Either one. For different reasons.
Did you know?
And I don't even think trouble to be down. How often do you gap your marking?
There's a frame there.
He's like a whole.
Because Dan. There's all kinds of frames that. None of them are real.
Okay, it is six P.M. We will call the February eighth meeting of the county board. Order at this time. We'll stand for a fudge of ladies in a moment silent.
The libel is to the flag of the United States of America. And to the record, for which it stands, one nation under God is indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Roll call will show four supervisors absent supervisor Sikorsky, McMenamin, Ives, and Michelson.
Okay. Approval of agenda, I would seek a motion at this time to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Members of the public wishing to be heard, we have none. We will move on then to the consent agenda. I would seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Okay, motion's been made. Is there a second?
No second.
Motion's made and seconded, approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Reports, county administrator report an update. I guess Randy and Lori, I don't know who's going first, but Lori, okay.
I'm ready. So can we get the joy of talking about CIP projects? Remember this is the annual update that we always give you guys? So this first slide will show you actually our funding for CIP, using sales tax funding and bonding funding for the last three years. This slide right here will show you previous projects that were current, before in progress of my last report last year. And so you can see the Spillman project would be the one that we would want to talk about. The go live actually did occur, but we're still waiting on the DA protection program getting that live. So we had to have all the other law enforcement agencies within the county. They had to be part of this to go live. And so there's just been a little challenge getting everybody to go forward with it. So we're almost there and also we need for the Department of Justice to give us approval that the files are acceptable.
What's the projected time to close out the Spillman project anyway?
Yeah, that's what we're hoping for.
Who's asking for a time? I'm asking for a time.
What was that? Oh, the time, how long? Oh, I'm sorry. We're hoping within a month or so because we're just waiting for the state to give us some approval with DOJ. The next slide is the radio tower project. We were told that it's substantially complete now. I know there's, I think there's two towers left to get working. Right here is the list of partial of our 2020 projects. Some more of our 2020 projects. And this is our last slide of our 2020 projects. And here are our 2021 projects. I don't know if you're called, but we've talked before about those showers over in the sheriff's department and the jail, the Hoover showers and the regular showers, about how we had two years of projects for those showers. Then we were able to consolidate that project into one. So we saw significant savings by being able to put those two projects together. Any questions about any of those that you've seen so far? And here's more of the 2021 projects. So we have a lot of 2021 projects that were, so some of them are closed, some of them are still in progress. And that's the end of the 2021. Any questions about 2021 projects?
I'm sorry, can we go back to 2020? I did, well, I saw that there was a variety of overs and unders. What was the total over or under for 2020 projects?
I'm sorry, I don't have that off the top of my head. I'd have to manually calculate it quick. The problem is too, is some of them aren't, there's some of them are still in progress with like the highway department and stuff. So, you know, I won't have an accurate number yet either. And this is the 2022 projects. These are the projects that you had approved back in June of last year. And so we're rate in progress of working on them right now. Any questions on those?
Can you flip it back? Hold on. Can you flip it back? Well.
So we have made acceptable progress on our CIP projects. And this is just, remember, this is just the annual report that we give to you. And the departments have received for our next year's CIP guidelines and forms back in December. So right now that's what they're working on, getting that together for us for, by March, I believe it is. And then it will be coming back to county board for approval in June. Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Will we see those in advance?
Sorry, what's that?
Will we see those requests in advance before that June meeting?
Yes, that will be part of the packet that will go with it. Yep, sort of the county board packet. And actually what's going to happen too is you're going to see those requests for the committees that you're part of. They'll be going to their May committees. May committees. So I have to like pick a one that gets done. That will be May.
Anyone else? Randy, did you have anything to add? Okay. All right, thank you, Lori. Move on to general reports, update on Northwest Ibec, Ken Schmidt.
There isn't much more to report other than what I sent out in the email back in November that's included here. The one thing is that you probably heard Washburn County is going to host it this year at Shell Lake. And next year looks like probably tentatively Price County following your Burnett County. And a year after that, maybe Barron County, they're thinking about it, so. There's going to be a larger public participation portion to it going forward. They've done some change, they've made some changes. They've eliminated three meals, one banquet, I believe, is one of those three meals. So it's going to look different, as in the past. To be simplified, hopefully, paramount.
Supervisor Steele.
Yeah, there was an article in the paper, later telegram on Friday on this. And it struck me kind of odd that they said that they're still going to have the banquet, but it's going to be a V.I.P. closer to public.
That's Friday night, I believe. That's kind of the way it was before also.
No, it's Saturday.
Was it Saturday night? Okay.
And then they're putting on a fish fry. I don't know who's putting on the fish fry. Are we kind of fronting the money for all that kind of stuff?
It's up to the host county. It's not, it's not if back per se.
I'm sorry. Sorry, I corrected. My group added a Saturday, community fish fry, Saturday here.
Any other questions? Ken, is there any, are they going to put together some kind of a budget process sent for this for the counties that belong to it? Or where do you stand on that?
There's, it probably is done already. We met last, middle of January, within the next week to 10 days after that. They were supposed to come up with a budget, tentative budget. We have a meeting Friday again, which I would expect to see that at, so. Actually, it's a week from Friday, it's eighteenth, so.
So I was also on that call with Ken. And really what they're looking at is to really bring in a lot of sponsors, corporate sponsors, company sponsors to pay for all the events so that there is not going to be cost pass on. They're not going to be asking any of the counties for money. Was the intent.
Yeah, there's a, they got, excuse me, they got the sponsors of Indian Head. And also their list of media contacts, which the media contacts really isn't going to do them much good. They've got better contacts, probably a better list than what Indian Head had. But the sponsors, that'll be useful, so.
Okay. Any other questions about the Ibec and Governor's Fishing Open for those that don't know? What we're talking about banquet, that's the Governor's Fishing Open banquet. All right. We will move on then. Well, we only have one board meeting left. We have the special meeting on the fifteenth, but our next regular board meeting will be the last board meeting for this, this term of the county board. Two years have gone by. And I'd be remiss if I didn't take time to thank our county employees or the sacrifices that they have made. Their patience, perseverance over the last two years of chaos, dealing with COVID and all these spinners. They dealt with sickness, family scheduling, daycare arrangements, changes in schedules at last minute. Sometimes one or two people handling a whole department. Mixed messages, mandates on, mandates off, open, closed, missed graduations, missed weddings, missed funerals, inability to see loved ones in nursing homes or hospitals, and some unfortunately lost loved ones in this two-year period. In general, they gave up their living a normal life for two years. All of this they did and they kept our county government rolling. They kept the wheels on the cart. You did the best to serve the people of Chippewa County at the sacrifice of your personal lives. I thank all of you from the bottom of my heart. The true measure of a person's heart is their willingness to make sacrifices today for future generations whose words of thanks will never be heard. This is you, county employees. You are the essential employees and our local heroes. Again, I thank you. At this time, I would ask that the board give an applause for our county employees and the work they did through this pandemic period. Business items. Resolution four twenty-two.
Resolution four dash twenty-two. Resolution to amend the guidelines and procedures for allocating American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 ARPA funds. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chippewa County Board of Supervisors does hereby approve the attached American Rescue Plan Act guidelines and procedures for allocating ARPA funds as amended forwarded to the county board by the executive committee.
We need a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to amend the guidelines.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion, Mr. Schultz.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good evening. The first change, or just really an update, to make sure the document's updated as we look back on going through some of these things is, on page one, we just put January sixth, the U.S. Treasury issued the final rule. And again, I'll continue to work with WCA and identify projects that are eligible for this process. And then as we started working through these projects, and my first notion was to try and bring this back as the CIP, the same thing you guys are used to seeing, I thought that brought familiarity to you, to departments. The problem we kind of ran into as we're looking at this is these are several year projects and they really need to be approved all at one time. So I want to move it from an annual process to a multi-year projects. So I bring the full plan to you guys and you can decide what you want to do if you want, you know, you still have the final say on that. But it's really not working, trying to bring each year separate and then put the other ones in a queue. Just the project types that we're dealing with just really aren't working for that. So that's the other change. And then really one of the bigger ones, as we were thinking through this, as we're working through the process, is that's number nine. And it says by March 2024, any ARPA funds allocated, basically the projects that we feel are not going to be completed. We bring those back to the county board so you can reallocate those funds. We know some of the projects unfortunately just out of, even out of our control, we may not be able to get product. We may not be able to get contractors or maybe something out there that we just cannot control. And, but obviously we don't want to lose this funding. So what we envision is by March 2024, we'll know that, we'll bring recommendation back to the county board through a resolution. You would decide where to spend that money. Really, at that point, probably the only place you can spend it is highway. Because they have several projects, obviously in the queue that they can spend a lot of money at because it costs a lot to do their roads. So that's probably where unless something comes up through all this, this process that there is other areas to spend the money. But we really want to make these changes because it's unfortunately the first plan didn't really work. So any questions?
Supervisor.
I don't know what button.
Oh.
Sorry, this is a fancy little guy.
Press green if you want to.
Green one if you want.
Three, okay, there you go. Question, I know that when we first talked about ARPA funds, there was discussion about tracking in the system that the government put together. Is that in place? Have you all received training yet? Where are we on that?
Oh, training, no. No, it is in place and Lori spent a lot of time going through that. She has had to report twice so far.
Yes.
Through the system, so yep, it's up and running. And then there's a lot to it, obviously, but different categories require different reporting. So those are the things that you, when you guys approve the projects, we're going to have to dig into exactly how to report some of them. But yeah, so it is up and running.
Up and running, is it pretty user friendly then?
Not really.
Federal government, so there you go.
Yeah, I mean, they didn't, they finished it like when, oh, I think actually after the deadline that we're supposed to reporting because they delayed the reporting timeline. So when you're trying to create something that vast and that with that much information, yeah, it's difficult. We're doing it.
Thank you.
Supervisor Steele.
Yeah, Randy, I know that this document here is really about all the CIP projects that's going to be done with that money.
ARPA.
Yes. What about things other than CIP projects?
So there's, yeah, this is in CIP, so this is ARPA. So we'll bring the.
I know it, but this document is treating our ARPA funds like CIP.
Like the process. Yeah, that was the idea. Yep.
Okay, now, what happens if somebody comes up with a recommendation that maybe we ought to set aside a certain amount of money or maybe helping out some of the grant money for some nonprofits that we work with, for example? That's just an example. Where does that, that don't fall in here?
Yeah, it does. Yep, so this is ARPA. So see, it's not the CIP like you're used to as far as qualifications for CIP. It's this, we're going to kind of use the same process, but ARPA has its own qualification. So if you come up with a recommendation that county board thinks is a good idea, we would then see if that qualifies under ARPA and then we could spend that money accordingly. So ARPA and CIP are completely separate tracks.
I guess what's confusing me is, is we're going down the road right now as an organization, starting in December, requesting that the department ads put together their ideas should happen. We are now into February. And our brainstorming session's coming up. We have one night of brainstorming session. And some of the people in the organizations had two months to work on theirs. I think that, I think that we ought to be a little bit more cognizant of how we spend this money rather than just what our department ads need.
Yeah, I mean, you have till now, I'll tell them though. I guess so. Is that what you mean?
Well, no, because let's say, let's say Annette Hunt comes up with a, I'm not picking on her. Annette Hunt comes up with a, an idea at our brainstorming session. And I had never thought about it. And it struck a bell with me. And when I got home, I could think about it more and I, my gosh, that we ought to get on that. How do we do that? I mean, you're saying there's a structure, but we haven't got together as a board to figure out what we want.
Sure. So you will then, and then I'll bring a draft plan forward also, and then the final.
Okay, I'm done. I mean, apparently I'm not, I'm not in.
You guys approved the process, so if you want to change the process, this is the time to do it.
I would like to change it.
It's the document.
I would like to change it. I would like to put in here that the county board goes through a more than just one brainstorming session to see how the money should be spent.
How many?
I don't know, three, probably?
The other thing that we've talked about going through this is we still got to go through our CIP process. We still got to go through our bonding process. There's a lot to go through, but I mean, it's, you guys got to be comfortable spending the money. So whatever you want to do, we'll figure it out. I think three would be very difficult. You might be able to get two, but that's up to you guys.
What, what's the timeline to spend it? Why is there a rush to spend?
Yeah, I don't think there's a rush, but some of these projects take years to do. There's one in DHS that was submitted, it'll be at the next committee meeting. That's multi-year and it has to do with foster care. So the sooner we can do that, the better. There's projects in there that have to have engineering done. There's projects that have to have A and E done. That takes time. So in 2024, we have to either be done with the projects or we have to have them on our contract, which seems like a long time to us, but it's not. I mean, that will go fast. So I think the, I mean, again, you can do whatever you want, but it'd be difficult. If you want to move the timeline or slower, we're going to have to take some projects off what's already submitted. I can guarantee you that.
Well, in reality, these projects, if there wasn't no funding like this available, they wouldn't have been perceived, wouldn't have been included in the budget anyway, correct?
Correct, yep.
So we're kind of looking at a wish list versus a need.
Well, there, we would say they're all needs. The problem is we never have enough funding to do our needs, right? So, yeah, so there's things that we'd go without for sure. Or they'll move them up faster, they won't be part of the CIP, which is part of our sales tax. The DHS one is thinking out of the box, it's trying to, you know, really get to the core of some of the problems we have there. So that will, but we'd never be able to fund that because that is, that would have been operational funds. It would not qualify under our CIP. There's projects in here that won't qualify under our CIP, they're under $50,000. So there's a bunch of things that would not qualify if we didn't have this funding.
But I guess to Mr. Steele's point, what, you know, is there really a need to rush to spend this money? It's basically a windfall.
Yeah, I don't consider rushing, I consider utilizing the funds. I mean, we could give it all the highway and it'd be really simple. I mean, it's what you guys decide you want to do with the funds, so. And you got to be comfortable, you know, your decision, so it's really up to you guys. But we felt like this would work for our upcoming budget, for our scheduling, for A and E, for engineering, for all the stuff that has to happen in order to get the funds spent by 2020. This is time to tweak it, if you want to tweak it.
Who's next? Cheryl.
It, it seems to me like the ARPA projects are coming through the committees. So that would be a place, if you're on a specific committee and you had an idea, I would think you would communicate that with the department chair. So that would be another avenue versus whole board meetings. I mean, I'm thinking we saw, we heard two of them in legal and law, you know, that were related to that. So I just wanted to point out that there's other avenues.
Ken Schmidt, and then Supervisor Steele.
Green button?
Yep.
How much are we going to, how much material we can get ahead of next week's meeting on this? Is all, are all the projects going to be listed or?
Yeah, we got a PowerPoint, we'll put it in the packet and it'll have what projects that qualify and the ones that went through the committee. There will be another list of ones that either didn't qualify or we moved them to CIP because we didn't feel like we could get them done in the timeframe of the ARPA timeframe. So you'll see all that. And it's really for you guys to see that and come up with your own ideas. So it's not, this isn't the plan and the final plan or anything.
Right, I get that.
Yeah, so you guys.
I'm just wondering how much time we have to see it for the meeting, that's what I.
They're pretty, I mean, they're pretty straightforward.
Right.
Plans. There's one that I'm going to definitely have the department to talk about, Tim, because it's a little more complex. But the other ones are really facility and parts and. because it's a little more complex, but the other ones are really facility and parts and highway, which is pretty simple, so it's pretty, they're not complex ideas, I guess. What's that?
We're gonna post it tomorrow.
Tomorrow it gets posted.
Okay, good.
Also, you're gonna have, you're gonna have an election here too, so the board's also gonna turn over April. We don't do any work at any committee meeting in April. So we gotta take that into effect too.
What?
Yeah, just, you bring a very valid point to the committees, but I've sat in two or three committees now and two out of the three, we never voted. It was brought to us as an awareness.
Well, you brought, everything's getting voted on by the committees. So you're ranking them and you're voting on them. Land Conservation Forest Manager was a report that'll be, the ARPA will be on this committee meeting. And I don't know what other committee you're talking about.
I don't think we did it in facilities, I don't think.
Yeah, you did.
Voted on it? I wasn't here.
I know. I know you have good questions there, so, I know.
Make that straight. I went out to get in a vehicle and I fell, so.
But the ones that are.
I crawled from laying on the garage floor.
No, no.
But anyway, that's beside the point.
Yeah, no, the.
You know, I, I. I wish I'd have been here to vote on that one then.
You still have a chance at the draft and you'll have a chance at the final. You'll vote on them.
But it's hard to convince this body. Or, you know, I mean, when, when we've had something brought before this body and one individual or two individuals stands up and says, we ought to change this and we ought to do that, very, very seldom does it ever get done.
It's already the rules, yep. Part of the politics. I don't know what to tell you.
Well, I would like to put a motion on it for that we at least have a brainstorming.
Okay, so you, I have Jackie.
To a man.
You're making a motion to a man. To have a brainstorming session, is that what you're asking?
To add.
Add another brainstorming session to the process.
Can you, would you be able to look at any of the steps and tell us where?
Because, isn't there another brainstorming in May?
Really, that's the thing, it's like, do you want the current board? That's the thing, because people was like messing with the timeline.
Because there's a, what is, I don't have.
I think the new board should, why, why should this board set all the priorities of projects for the next board that have to live with?
They're not.
They're not, sorry. It's just the process.
Yeah, they're not. The brainstorming's with the new board.
The brainstorming will be when? The next board?
Not the brainstorming, but approving.
Oh, the draft.
The plan and the resolutions.
Yeah, the brainstorming is by this board.
So it would have to be this.
There's another meeting in May.
Point of clarification, Mr. Chair, you indicated that our last meeting is February 15th, but we do.
No, 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 we have the next, we have a special meeting on the 15th, but our last regular board meeting is next, the second Tuesday.
15th, we have one schedule. I mean, we're, today, we spent, today, the whole week, last two days, we've talked about CIP and this together, so. And I don't have the dates in front of me, so I'm not gonna be, I'm gonna tell you exactly what date is which, but. Okay, well, step three, if you look in your packet or you look on there, is our, that's the what? That's the next Tuesday.
So we have between the 15th and.
And then step four will be the next, exactly.
Well, step three, I think, instead of saying special meeting, have two special meetings. Then go to step four.
Two special meetings for this board?
Do I have to do that in?
You're, you're saying that right now, there's, there's obviously the one coming up on Tuesday, but there is one in May?
I think that's the draft.
That's a draft, that's not a brainstorm, no.
That was the listening session, but listening session, right?
In May, we would vote.
Uh, would be a draft plan and then the public would be there for what the draft plan looks like. You would get the feedback from that. You would give us feedback on the draft plan and then I gotta break back to the final plan to do the exact after that. When is it?
In July.
In July.
Well, I think we gotta deal with.
Yeah, we gotta deal with the motion, then, then Don is next.
I don't know what I'm putting here. Add.
To add a special meeting, is that what the terminology is?
Special brainstorming meeting?
Second, a second one.
Step three. Instead of saying a special county board meeting, you should have special, two special county board meetings. For brainstorming. So at least we got a week to think about what's brought before us at the brainstorming meeting.
We have to do this one, March, okay, or now?
We'd have to do it the next week.
The next week?
Well, if I don't get any support on it.
Well, no. No, maybe just gotta figure out when.
It hasn't got seconded, so.
Okay. Okay, so we'll deal with the motion and so, motion's been made, is there a second?
Keep the discussion going, I'll.
Yeah. The motion's made in second and Mr. House should speak.
It would help me to put some dates on those things and, and actually what format that is. And, and then I would maybe understand Representative Steele's approach there. So obviously, step three is next week. And then if we put in another one, another step three, you know, would that be within two weeks after that or? What would be the case there?
I think it'd have to be in the next week, right? Do we have, I don't know, I don't have a calendar.
Okay, so next week or after that is 21st through the 25th. February.
Yeah, 15th.
The 15th is the special meeting, but week 1st through the 25th. And then there's one day left, Monday, this 28th, but in March. Looks like it's gonna be a busy month.
So that, they'd have to be that week. Jack, we'd have to figure out what works for the county board.
What week are we looking? Yeah.
The week of the 21st.
Of February? I'm confused.
Since just now?
Actually, I could come in, I'm not, I don't have.
Do we have a date or does it's gotta be open?
We can leave it.
You have, we'd have to make it work for that week, but Jack would have to talk, call everybody and figure it out. Probably be that Tuesday or Thursday.
So.
Or, I mean, we, the motion and the second doesn't specify a date, so.
Right.
But it's gotta be for step four, so step four is the next, exactly.
Okay, well, so if the, so if the motion passes, we'd have to wait for you to pick a date to move on with this.
I don't.
Yeah, because it isn't in the motion. Okay, motion's been made in second and any further discussion? There ain't no further discussion, then. Have the clerk read the motion and we'll vote.
This is.
The amendment, this is amendment.
Was to add two special county board meetings to step three for brain.
So this is the amendment. So green for yes and no.
Looks like they're all there. Are you okay with me releasing?
Yep.
Seven yes, four no.
Okay, amendment passes. Any further discussion on the original motion?
Hold it till clear so I can press my button, right, no?
Say what?
It'll have to be till clear so I can.
No, that's, I mean.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Okay, so question, I know that we had some special meetings previously to talk about broadband. Is this included in that pot of money or is that a separate pot of money?
Yeah, this is the same money.
The same money, okay. And, but that has already been approved?
Yep.
Now we're looking at the balance?
1.7 million, yep. And we'll have that in there.
Very good, okay, thank you.
Any other supervisors, any discussion? Hearing none, then we will call the vote on the original motion. Those in favor of resolution 422 would push green, those opposed, push red. There, no, we already did. As amended, as amended.
Can I release? They're all in.
Okay.
Ten yes, one no.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, move on to resolution 522.
Resolution number 5-22, resolution to establish the annual compensation for the sheriff, clerk of courts and the coroner positions for 2023 through 2026, read by title only.
Okay, do I hear a motion approved, put it on the floor?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
No second.
Motion's made in second, discussion.
Yep. Um, these are for the three elected officials that were mentioned. If you remember last time, two years ago, we did it for three other elected officials. And I've done this for years and years. I've always looked at our elected officials as the same as our department heads. They gotta be, we want good elected officials, we want to retain good elected officials. They gotta go through training, they gotta do a lot of hard work. So I really treat them the same. So the system I came up with years ago is to set their salaries the same as our employees. And the reason we're doing this now is we have to set these salaries before they take out papers to run. So that's why the, the timing of this. So what we'd be looking at doing is for each of the elected officials, we do a 6% for their first year. Because the previous four years, they were 6% behind what our employees received. And then after that, we would do 2% for the next three years, not knowing exactly what our employees receive, but we always use that first year as a catch-up. Or in some cases, I've actually had it where it went down because we gave 2% to elected officials and our employees didn't get any, so that wasn't very fun. But we'd always adjust that on that, that first year.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none? We'll then call the vote for resolution 522. Wish approved, press green. No, press red.
Eleven yes.
Okay, then we'll move on to proposed revisions to the facility and use policy, first reading?
I got Larry here, our facilities director. Good evening. Well, the proposed revision to the facility use policy, the reason for it is the evening staff here sometimes feel a little less than safe because we have people in the building because it's a quieter evening. Sometimes they'll get surprised. A rare occasion, we've had some, I can't even relate incidents, had to call the sheriff's department. So this request has been out there for a while. If we could close the building a little bit earlier on evenings where we did not have evening meetings. So instead of closing doors three and four at 10:00 PM, we would then lock them up at 6:00 PM. That's really the thrust of the proposed change. The other revision is we add the new conference room down in 005 that were, it's under construction now and in about hopefully seven, eight weeks, it'll be done. And then we're adding that to the local office conference rooms there, so we could work with it.
Any questions for Larry? Mr. House?
Do staff have access to the building then because of their key code or, or it's completely closed?
Nope, the, the key fobs would work. Staff would have access.
Anything else? Okay. Okay, number four, again, economic development policy, first reading.
Oh, Doug's gonna come up, the clear planning and zoning director will come up and explain it, but I just wanted to say a few words. This, this has been going on for five years, six years. There is, there was many different policies out there, resolutions out there, and this is an attempt to get everything in one packet, be able to hand it to potential people that are looking for our land or looking for our policy and not having to go into several different documents to try and figure that out. So the plan will be, this will be the first reading. We actually have to bring a resolution at the next county board meeting to rescind all those other ones. We didn't bring this, we didn't bring it this time because if we did, we'd be a month without a policy. So we'll bring the resolution next time and then have the second reading for the policy.
Kind of reminds you guys, your guys, he's back. So tonight. You saw.
No.
What?
No, I don't, I don't do scary.
I couldn't sleep for a week, so. So as Randy had mentioned, we, as we were moving forward with the development of the Lake Wusota Business Park, it came, it became very evident to Todd and I and Randy and Lori, our procedures for selling land and dealing with Lake, Lake Wusota Business Park, they were scattered throughout all different types of resolutions. And in the 11th hour, everybody was always asking us, from title companies to their attorneys, where do you have the authority to do this? And Todd and I would go back and say, well, if you go to this resolution and then go to this resolution, take out this language from here and then add in this language here, that's where we get the authority. And it became pretty evident that we needed to have one document that we could hand to individuals and say, here's our policy, here's how we do this in Chippewa County. And so that started the process of taking different formatted versions. I think we, we didn't have DOS or WordPerfect, but it was a whole bunch of different versions and different fonts and slapped it into one document to come up with what you have today. It actually was really bad the first time around because Todd and I went through and we struck out language and added language and all over the place and it looked like there was a bloodbath within the original document. So what you see tonight is a, is a project in its work and its works and there was many eyes that took a look at this in order to get to this point. So right now, we have a nice title page, which you can find on page one. And we divided this up into what is the purpose of this document? And really, this document guides the sale of the land in the village lake, or excuse me, in the Lake Wusota Business Park for existing businesses that are here in Chippewa County or for new businesses that are looking at coming into the county. That's really the focus of this particular document, is dealing with the sale of land. And when I was here in December, November, here last year at the end, we talked. And when I was here in December, November, here last year at the end, we talked about having a, you approved a resolution for designating economic land for sale. That's within this document as well. It also includes some of the incentives that were put into those previous resolutions that we're looking at when we're dealing with businesses and trying to figure out how to make them stay, or how to encourage them to stay within Chippewa County, or how to get them into Chippewa County. And a lot of that deals with those incentives on the backside. We weren't looking for the Lake Wasota Business Park to be dominant in one business or another, we wanted variety out there so that we could ride this economic wave through the lows and the highs of each of those businesses throughout the years. And if you haven't had the opportunity to go out to Lake Wasota Business Park and take a drive out there, some of those buildings, when you get to them, are very huge. On the maps that we deal with, they're like five, six hundred. So you really don't understand the, the, the three dimensions of those buildings until you actually drive out there and see how huge they are. I've been privileged to be able to work on eight of those projects out there, we have 15 of them, and we have about 21 lots that are left over, you have to sell out there. And as we get those big businesses in there, our smaller lots are gonna start filling up, and as part of this pro, as part of this process, doing the economic development policy, we wanted to make sure that the county board as a whole understood where the authorities lie. And that is granted by the econo, or by the county board to the economic development committee. This allows us as staff and the committee, the guidance, to be able to work with these prospective buyers or clients, or the existing clients within Chippewa County, to give them or get them into land in the Lake Wasota Business Park, or other land that we decided designated, which once again is designated by county board. So this document will allow us that opportunity to set it forth, it also sets up some procedures for certain things. So as an example, in the first page here, we go through all the purposes, and I'm not gonna read this, but it, it really sets up what those incentives are, what is our purpose for being in the economic development realm? Well, for Chippewa County, we were lucky because we had a whole bunch of land that was the county farm, and when they looked at closing the county farm, that was before my time here, they wanted to develop this Lake Wasota Business Park. We worked with entities at the local level, at the state level, at the federal level, to get funds to put in the road network out there. And if you happen to be here and you happen to drive through there 20 years ago, there was roads and lights and manholes, and there was no buildings. Fast forward 21 years and you see these huge buildings out there, that's a lot of work with not only internal staff, Randy and Lori and Todd and myself, but also with Charlie Walker at the Chippewa County Economic Development Corporation. He really is the one that, he responds to a lot of RFPs, which are, hey, we're looking for land, what do you guys have? And gets us onto the map with individuals that are dealing with companies that are looking around the United States in order to build a facility, whatever that facility may be. And with this policy, and allowing it to be guided by the economic development committee, allows us a turnaround time with these projects and not to really cog up your meetings on the backside of this. There's a lot of meetings that Todd and I have and Randy have in order to get these projects up and running, and then sometimes it feels like I get a baseball bat to my kneecaps and I fall down, and then we get back up and start working on these projects again. And I'm sure that that is probably maybe the same feeling that some of the clients feel, you know, because we're trying to go through these policies that are all over the board within the records and say, well, here's this one, and this one says do the hokey pokey and come over here and grab this one. This, once again, allows us that opportunity to do that. Sets up the procedures, we have the economic development incentives that Chippewa County offers on page two at the top of that. In section three, this is where you, you will, the county board designates the economic development committee as a committee to deal with economic development within the county. It has the points of contact and flow, which once again is gonna be Charlie Walker with the CCEDC, or whoever his replacement is in the future if he decides to leave, and then the county administrator. On the backside of that, once again, Lori, Todd and I are working on stuff on the backside in order to make this work and get the appropriate information of the economic development committee. And each one of us plays a, a role in this as a work group, we meet, we talk about it, Lori really talks about or deals with the revolving loan fund and the small business disaster relief loans. Where I'm really kind of on the backside of those, when it gets into the land development and dealing with Lake Wasota Business Park, that's really where I kind of step in and, and really help out with that, that portion of it. But we all, once again, have a, have a portion in this. When we get to section five of this, of this document, we decided to list the economic development land within this document. So once again, at the end of last year, we did have a policy or a, a resolution that designated additional lands. Well, remember, we have all these other policies that say, yep, you guys can sell this one and you can sell these, now it's in one document. And that's all listed here in, at the top of page three, starts at the bottom of page two. Those totals right now, there's 26 lots, I think I said 24 before, and then the bottom two underneath six, D and E, those are two parcels that are adjacent to the school property that if we have a development that comes into the school property, then only portions of those properties could be used for the development. And once again, just to remind you, the reason that is is because the, the lots where they were drawn out there actually cut off kind of the high plateau on there, and so we wanted to incorporate some of that into that overall development. And once again, those are the conversations that I have with the economic development committee of, we really should be looking at A, B, and C because it'll enhance that development out there. We will have deed restrictions for the, we do have restrictions for the economic developer, for the Lake Wasota Business Park, those are recorded in the register of deeds, and any future land that would be designated by the county board for economic development, we would also have the opportunity through the economic development committee to put on deed restrictions so that it's more of a continuity for the development out in those areas itself. The price of land, this is, this is a, a good item to have in here because it really sets up the boundaries of the economic development committee, and it sets up how they're going to sell that land. So currently, you can see in this, the proposal right now is that we would get an appraisal on those properties, and the economic development committee can set that price no lower than 75 nor higher than 125 on that land. Currently, we do have an appraisal on the Lake Wasota Business Park, it's about four years old, and that original one for industrial land was 20 or 35,000 per acre, the economic development committee has set it at 28,000 right now. And that's just for the industrial land, any type of commercial land that goes on a square foot basis, that comes above 225 to 450 right now out there, which some of those lands are two and a half acres, it gets up there pretty pricey, but it's a commercial lot, which is backed up by appraisal that the committee looks at and then determines how far below that are they going to allow the sale of that property? Sometimes they'll take a look at it and decide, maybe it's good for us to sell it at 75% because we want to get some more businesses out there, or maybe it's a business that's bringing in something into the area that adds to the diversity that we have for jobs. Page, the top of page four is where we get into that revolving loan fund, that's a pot of money that's set aside, once again, I'm not an expert in that by any means, but the applications, this is like a gap financing type of a loan that the county has. We have a designated amount that's set aside, they do go, the businesses that submit, as you can see, there, there are some initial eligibility requirements, and one of them is that they're at, you know, that they have less than 50 employees, and then there's a whole bunch of business types there that they would fall into. Those, the application and all the financial information is, is vetted through the Chippewa County Economic Development Corporation, and they make a recommendation back to the economic development committee for what they believe, if, if the loan is, is good, if it's bad, and then they also include some other variables in there such as the length of the loan, and then the interest rate that they would charge for that loan. So this revolving loan fund is, is replenishing, that money, once it's paid back, it goes back into the fund, and then the interest goes back in there as well with, you know, I would assume the idea is as businesses need it, we keep on growing that pot, so we have more money to go around for that. But once again, Lori knows all the ins and outs of that, and if you have any questions on that, she would be more than available to answer those particular types of questions. Then, once we get into, so there's a whole bunch of performance criteria, they have to sign all the cool fund documents, and there's penalties for repayment and all that typical stuff that goes along with loans. Then we get into section seven, which is the small business disaster relief loans, this is a subset of the revolving loan fund, and those, once again, we set up the initial criteria, we're looking at those employees, and this is really if they, they have some type of a natural disaster, something that's designated, a tornado, a flood, or something that affects those businesses, that they could apply for loans through this particular program. Now, as a subset of this particular portion of the ordinance, or excuse me, the, the policy, there is, if you remember, a couple of years ago, there was a, a COVID relief program that came out that had different criteria to it and different amounts. That is part of the small business disaster relief loan, and those additional criteria or different criteria is approved at the county board level for a certain amount of time. So in the past, this used to have that COVID relief program, and there was one other one, Lori, that was on there.
Was it tornado?
Was it the tornado?
No, there was one other one in there. See, I've got all these strikeouts in my brain that I just can't figure out what the text is underneath them, so I apologize, but, but it, so those are, once again, like the COVID relief, that would be set up by the county board, and it streamlines some of this process that is listed underneath paragraph seven. Then, as part of this, once again, remember, it's a document that we want to try to hand out to individuals so they have one place, one stop to get the information, we've added the appendixes in here, the first one, appendix A, is gonna list all of the economic development land deed restrictions, so right now, we only have one set that's recorded in the registered deeds, we gave them the document number, and obviously, it's recorded in the Chippewa, Chippewa County Registered Deeds Office, so they can go there and get it themselves, or if they call us, we'll give it to them as well. Then we added in the economic development incentive application, this is what Charlie reviews, once again, Charlie Walker with Economic Development Corporation, and then we threw in the flow charts in here, so you can kind of see that process that this really, that revolving loan fund would go through, or that small business disaster relief loan as well, which they're similar in nature, but there is a different, excuse me, there are different committee names that are stuck right in the middle of this document. And just because of the way that some of the policies are set up or the procedures, we have a revolving, a revolving loan fund committee that looks at the revolving loan funds, and then we have a committee that is the small business disaster relief loan review committee. So a lot of acronyms we threw in here, so hopefully you don't find one that's not called out in here. But other than that, that is where we're at right now with this economic development policy. As Randy mentioned, you will see at the next, this is the first reading tonight, in March, you will see this for the second reading, you will also see that resolution that will terminate all those other resolutions that are out there, so there's no misunderstanding of that, that's all that I have. Unless you guys have any questions.
So I just have just one question on the point contact.
Love it, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
I got a button pushing, I got a click, so let's see, what do we have? Oh.
Supervisor Hunt.
Actually Supervisor Hunt beat everybody to the.
Give me a hang of it. Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to say as a member of the economic development committee that this was probably just a huge undertaking, auditing all the different places where all the, you know, all the pieces of information was, and I just want to thank you and Todd and whoever else is part of the effort, because this all being in one place makes us look a lot better to, to potential businesses that want to come in. And I think because having it in one place, we'll, we'll probably see, you know, an impact of that in the future, so thank you, guys.
Supervisor Steele?
Yeah, the process, I think, started with the economic development work group, and then they did every changes, and, and then they went to the economic development committee, right?
That is correct, yep.
Okay, the work group is like yourself, Todd, Lori, is that what it is?
Yep, so internally, that staff is Randy and Lori, Todd and myself, Charlie Walker from Chippewa County Economic Development Corporation is on there as well, and then because we're dealing with economic development in the city of Chippewa Falls, we will see Brad Henshaw pop into our meetings as well, so he's not a county staff, but he's part of this process that we bring in.
And the chair of economic development.
Yeah.
I guess this is just for Lake Wasota. The, the Lake Wasota Business Plan of, of development. But then, I see in there that, well, we can carry this on to other.
No. Originally, all the resolutions only included land for the Lake Wasota. And that was where we were having a little bit of conflict because we had the school property that came back into our hands, we had other pieces out in the Lake Wasota Business Park area that we've either carved off or desert, or looked at those and said, this is in county hands, no one's in control of this, how do we get the economic development committee to be the authority to sell these or negotiate for those? That was in that resolution that we bought, brought to you last December.
I'm sorry, December.
December for approval, so this document was really truly meant to say, let's get rid of the Lake Wasota Business Park as a term within this document, and let's call it economic development land. The only way that the economic development committee can sell that land is if we get approval from the county board as a whole. So right now, you designated in the past, the county board had designated everything in the Lake Wasota Business Park, we came back for five or six additional lots that weren't part of the Lake Wasota Business Park, and that's where there was just a little bit of a difference in there because there may be another piece around the city of Chippewa Falls somewhere else that the county takes ownership of somehow, some way, some fashion, and that you want it to be designated by some type of a committee that has the ability to negotiate for the sale of that property, whatever it's gonna be, and that's where we thought that the economic development, you know, land designated as economic development was a more appropriate term to use.
Okay, Chuck?
Yeah, the, the question I had for your points of contact or flow of formation, any specific mention of including the city of Chippewa Falls, especially like your land that was Lake Wasota Business Park, or any that's in, in the city's TIF districts, which is a, you know, a huge tool, you know, that's been used in many of our big things, of not specifically mentioning to have them in the, you know, in, in the communication process. For land that's within that TIF district, which, you know, you need them to have that tool, I just wanted, you know, I don't see any mention of that.
Yep, and once again, we're, we're dealing with all land in the county that's designated as economic development, so it may be City of Stanley, it may be the Village of Lake Alley, New Auburn, Town of Eagle Point, and so this document was really setting it up for the rules at the county board level. Now, one of the incentives or one of the purposes of the document too is to work with those local jurisdictions on either the infrastructure or those approvals. So as I mentioned, that work group that we have right now, because a lot of the, the projects we've been developed, working on are within the city of Chippewa Falls, and that's why Brad steps into our meetings and helps us out in the front end of that, as well as working with the city council, the city Chippewa Falls, with the TIF districts in that county. We, I mean, I, I can't speak for the economic development committee, but I would assume that if we were working with one of the other entities, we would want to have that same relationship with them, it's just too hard to put those types of relationships in here, calling out specific entities without just basically saying, we're gonna work with the local jurisdictions.
What was the fact of it, I, I don't know, do any of them, any other places have a TIF district other than?
Stanley, Bloomer.
Yeah, and regarding to the TIF district, it's such a huge tool for you, I just wondered, you know, it's not, not anybody that has a TIF district, whether it's just Chippewa Falls or not, which I think may be the only one, but that's why I mentioned.
No, there's several TIF, Lake Alley, Bloomer.
Okay.
And once again, we're, we're, we're more involved with the city of Chippewa Falls because the land is Chippewa County's, and we developed it in cooperation with the city.
Yeah, it's just, it's just, I don't want that. Yeah, it's just, it's just, I don't want that to get lost, because sometimes that, you know, sometimes things have come too late into the thing, and with Brad, with Brad at the moment, on part of, involved in the committee, that's, it's working.
Yeah, I.
The communication, we better that way, but there's nothing written there saying that, that's all, I was just.
Yeah, and, and once again, that's a two-way street, so I think we work well with Brad, and keeping him apprised of what's going on. He attends our work group meetings, and gives us insight into maybe some of the things that he's looking at, not only within the city, but with the Lake Wasota Business Park.
Yeah, no problem with that, it's just with the document, you're kind of establishing protocol, just to get losses, people, different people move in and out and things. Okay, thank you.
Well, and, and the good thing about this is, once again, we have that work group with potentially six people, this really sets it up to Randy and Charlie, and then they will disseminate the information, because, so then it's not, you know, they're calling Todd, they're calling Lori, they're calling me, it's, call Randy.
Yeah.
Call Charlie.
They need a central point.
Yeah.
Okay, Doug? So we had a consultant come in with possible purchases for the county to, for our new industrial park, and industrial park land, so then upon the board approving those purchases, that would also fall under this document? So that covers that base too?
Well, as, as long as it's designated by the county board as economic development land, then it would get into that authority.
So that actually helps us move forward with what we had for a plan. We do purchase, now we have a document that will cover that, and not be just specific to the Lake Wasota Business Park. Okay. Any questions?
If you happen to have any questions in between now and next month, please feel free to get ahold of me, or Randy, he's a kinda.
Okay. Agenda items for future consideration. All righty. I will then seek a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Chuck, all seconds. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are, we are.